Call to order the September 11th, 2023 Bayport City Council meeting. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks. Wanna do the roll, Matt?
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Present.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Mayor Hanson.
Here. Some of you got fancy on us today.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion approving tonight's agenda.
Alright.
Second.
Thanks, Connie and John. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Alright, so we got a nice short agenda. Um, first thing is proclamations, commendations, petitions, and announcements. And the August recycling award recipient is Brendan England at 1212 Inspiration Parkway. And he will be getting a, um, gift card, basically? Is that what he gets from the county for doing his recycling? So, thank you, Brendan. And then we will move on to the open forum. This is a portion of the meeting to address city council on subjects that are not part of the agenda. And we, the city council may take action or reply at the time of the statement or may give direction to staff regarding investigation of comments expressed. A total of 15 minutes is allotted for public comment during the open forum. I think this is the first time since I've been mayor, there's nobody in here, so.
You're doing good.
We, yeah, we are doing well. So, um, let's see. Consent agenda, consider resolution adopting items 1 through 10. August 7th, 2023 city council workshop minutes, August 7th, 2023 city council regular meeting minutes, August payables and receipts, August building, plumbing, mechanical, and zoning permits report, extension of a joint powers agreement with St. Paul Park for law enforcement services, award a quote for street spray patching maintenance, donation request from Bayport Community Action League to support Derby Days, award the quote for Centennial Pavilion Project at Village Green Park, uh, the grant application to Conservation Partners Legacy for landscape restoration work at Barker's Alps Park, and replacement of sewer utility truck for the Public Works Department. We have a roll call vote. Right? Oh, make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thanks.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. Alright, there are no public hearings, no unfinished business. So, our new vision, business is to consider a request to replace electrical service to a streetlight located at 137th Street North.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, normally, this isn't something that would be brought to council attention, um, but there are somewhat special circumstances for this. Um, so during the April 1st snowstorm, there was actually a significant number of streetlights um, that had their electric service essentially ripped out of the mast um, for the light poles, um, including this one. Um, the interesting thing about this one is that the service comes from a back alley that is unimproved and the service comes between two houses. So, Excel currently does not have, um, a right-of-way between the two houses to allow for trimming trees, um, nor do they make it a practice to trim trees for only the single streetlights, of which this is one. Um, ultimately, they came back with, um, three options for the city. Um, one would be to relocate the streetlight south of their current location where they can pull overhead power from a different pole. Um, this would move the streetlight one, one or two houses to the south and not necessarily shine on the same area. Um, two would be to leave the streetlight in the current location, but, um, install underground electric service to the property, um, add a cost to the city of $4,399. So, it would be bored from First Avenue South down to 7th Street and then up the hill of 7th Street to this location. Um, and then option three, um, would be to remove the streetlight entirely. Um, we have received feedback from a couple of the neighbors who would prefer to, hence the reason that this is at the council meeting, um, that would prefer to see the streetlight in the same location as it is. Um, I will say that in that location, it does light the curve of the property up there, although the speed on that road is likely not extremely fast, which your headlights should be doing the due diligence of lighting the road. Um, a couple of residents indicated, uh, potential burglary, um, given no lighting, um, lighting of the road was a big one. Um, I did include, um, a letter from one of the residents, um, not necessarily in the packet, but for you to look at tonight. Um, city does not have a policy regarding streetlight placement. That one's technically in the mid-block, but if you lined it up, it would be on Central Avenue. So, it really isn't a block section, it's just that that section's two blocks long, essentially. Um, so typically, we have a streetlight at every block intersection. So, it would kind of fall under our typical, um, scenario of where we would put a streetlight. That's all I have unless we have questions. Um, city staff are not necessarily making a recommendation. Um, you know, we are open to, uh, any scenario that the city council would prefer.
All the neighbors are, that we've heard from are in favor of keeping it in some way, shape, or form.
Yes, the three neighbors that we have exclusively heard from. We didn't necessarily go down and, you know, take a random sample of, of neighbors, but the ones who we have heard from want it kept in the same location, yep.
And did anyone talk about if it were moved, how they would feel about it being in a new location? Cause that, like you said, it's not gonna shine.
Yeah, they indicated that in the location that it would move is there's already a house down there that has lights lit up the whole road and that it would be kind of pointless in that location.
Mm-hmm.
It, it would be, I think. I know that neighborhood pretty well.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I think we need to probably figure out a way to keep it for those folks as much as I'm anti-streetlight.
Anyone else have to answer?
I don't know that.
Oh, I didn't think he was done.
We should maybe pay for all of it. Um, maybe there'd be a way to split some of those costs. I mean, underground is, that's not fail-safe cause underground can go bad as well.
Yeah, so.
Animals can get at it, but.
A little update there, underground is actually more expensive to maintain than overhead.
Yep.
Um, there is a cost increase of about $10 per month for an underground light versus an overhead light. Um, that cost will provide for a new light with a fiberglass pole and not a wooden pole with a light on it.
The four, the $4,399 would be a new pole.
Yes.
Everything.
Yep.
And that is a city pole and a city fixture.
Correct.
We don't have any insurance or anything that covers things like that?
I can check. I did not necessarily check on that, but my guess is probably not. It didn't necessarily destroy the pole. Um, it was more the line going in, right? And based on the fact that we don't necessarily have a right-of-way going through there, um, definitely inhibits that. Um, I don't know what our claim would necessarily be.
Well, I guess I feel like we should do something for him cause if I were up there and, I mean, cause really, you got the woods behind.
Right.
It's dark, so I guess I feel like, um, if they're asking for it and if it is city, I think we need to do something about it. Um, the one, she mentioned the solar. Another option would be pursue the placement of a solar-powered light. Is that anything that would be, I know, don't know any much about it, so I just didn't know if that'd be something.
Yeah, from a reliability standpoint and a location standpoint there, I don't think it would be the best choice.
Okay.
Um, especially given the fact that if it only makes it halfway through the night or something like that in the winter.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Um, I do know that we have our, our solar-powered speed limit sign on the south end of town and sometimes in the winter, we do lose, um, connection on that cause the battery can't get charged enough.
Okay.
So, um, and given that, that one's close to the hill there, um, with the setting sun, makes it kind of difficult.
Okay.
And I didn't necessarily find any viable op, streetlight options that were solar and cost-effective.
It's kind of a unique sc- scenario. I mean, you said we don't have anything in our ordinances or anything, but it, it was kind of a force of nature. So, I think, um, we just need this. If they're, if they're for having it replaced, we should see what we can do about it.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, if that's the prerogative, I don't, I don't think I need a motion, just some direction, especially at the cost that's associated with it.
How do other council members feel?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they want it, and it was there before, so you should have to replace it. I just don't know how, like, how do you go about figuring out what we would pay? Like, cause you, how many places do you look? You just, or you just, you look three different places or you guys are, the city is doing all the work?
Nope, so it's Excel Energy. They, they run all the streetlights in the city except for the ones through downtown and then there's some out in Inspiration. So, that's our vendor, so they don't, we don't go out to anybody else besides that, yep.
I mean, the, the, the people we have a letter in front of us from our longstanding Bayport residents that have given significantly to this community.
That's true.
Um, give their time and, um.
Yeah.
Maybe that shouldn't matter, but it, it does matter to me, so.
Well, and again, I, I'm like you, John, I'm not a huge fan of having streetlights if we don't really need a streetlight especially, but, um, if they feel it's, it's necessary, I guess we don't have a good reason to deny that when there always has been a light there for them, so.
Yeah, fix it.
So, I think you have your direction, right?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, then I guess we get to have Matt talk about the budget. Do you?
Are you limping?
Don't ask.
Oh, okay, I won't ask.
Alright, so this will be a discussion about the 2024 preliminary budget. Um, so just to start out with the budget calendar. Um, in June, obviously of this year, uh, budget information was distributed to department heads. Um, they're able to look through their budgets, um, look at increases or decreases that they may see, um, from past years and then provide a recommendation to the city administrator. Um, in July 2023, the department heads submit their budget requests to the city. Um, we converse about it, have conversation about what can and can't get cut potentially. Um, this year, there wasn't a lot because of the, um, demands on certain items in the budget, uh, which we'll go over later. Um, August 7th, the city council conducted their first workshop to discuss the preliminary tax levy, uh, budget and capital improvement projects. Um, at that, uh, meeting, we thought there was a chance we could do a higher increase to the levy, which turned out to be false, um, based on, you know, feedback from the council and even recommendation from city staff. Um, August 30th, uh, staff provided the city council with alternative options to that original levy, um, to do, to reduce the preliminary tax levy that was presented on August 7th. Um, that's with information provided by Washington County to, on the tax impacts of our levy to the individual residents. Um, September 11th, which is today, city conducted a second workshop to discuss those alternative, uh, tax levy options and determine, um, that a 5.4% increase was appropriate um, based on city needs and ability to, um, uh, plan for the future. Um, so tonight, we'll be considering the adoption of that preliminary tax levy, the budget, and the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. Uh, September 30th is the deadline for the city to submit or to certify the preliminary tax levy to Washington County. Um, just a quick note, if you don't certify by that date, they actually take your levy from the previous year and put that, um, towards, um, what your, uh, tax levy will be. Uh, December 4th, the city, um, conducts Truth and Taxation Public Meeting. Essentially, it's a public meeting allowing residents to come in and provide comments on not only the tax, city tax levy, um, but their taxes as a whole. Um, and then December 29th is the deadline for the city to certify the preliminary, the actual tax levy or the final tax levy and budget to Washington County. Um, I will note that tonight's, um, levy is a preliminary levy, which allows us to set it and then we cannot raise it after the September 29th submission, but we can lower it, so. Um, 2024 city services, um, these are really unchanged over the past multiple years. Um, we provide a very wide range of services, especially for a small city. Um, police, fire, public safety, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but a library, um, for a city this size to have its own library. Um, we were just discussing with the, uh, library director tonight about her budget. Um, it's very unusual for a city this size to have a, a city-owned library. Um, and then, of course, municipal water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer. And then, of course, at the end, capital improvements, um, that always need to get completed. Some of the significant factors that contributed to the 2024 budget, these include, um, a normal 3% increase in wages for the labor agreement for union staff. This carries through to the union staff also. Um, also, an 11.5% increase in residential housing market value. Um, we happened to look at Connie Carlson's house tonight and saw that, um, her market value went up, um, just like it indicates on Washington County, uh, website. Um, we also saw two big increases, one for property and liability insurance throughout the city and one for workers' compensation insurance throughout the city. Um, these numbers are, um, seem small, but together they add up along with the fiscal disparities distribution. Um, essentially what that is, the city, the metro cities as their, as a whole pool their money together for items such as commercial taxation. And so, what happens then is, based on your commercial tax capacity, that whole pool, you get paid out a certain amount. While from this year to last year, we are getting $40,539 less, likely because our commercial district is doing well. So, it's a catch-22. Um, we also did receive from the local government aid an increase of $133,672, um, which is wonderful from the state. It is their intent, based on past conversations, that they will be keeping that level higher for years to come, so. Um, but it's not unheard of to see that amount decrease. Um, and then the library levy is increasing $9,500, um, for their, um, their portion. Uh, we're also seeing an increase in police wages. Um, tip, primarily how we calculate, we're including the night shift, holiday pay, and support staff this year, which we have not included in past years. Um, and we're also seeing an, eh, increase in inter-fund transfers to fund budgeted capital expenditures. Um, this includes the potential Fourth Avenue Street project um, and some public works equipment purchases and fire department equipment purchases. Um, our capital outlay, uh, for the year, I'm not gonna go through all of it. Um, the fire department has a, a substantial amount primarily because a lot of their equipment is very expensive and we're replacing probably about one piece of equipment on a yearly basis. And we are behind on building up a fund for their replacement. Um, public works equipment is higher than in years past. Um, I believe we'll be purchasing about, uh, four different pieces of equipment this year. And by "we," I mean "city" because Simon's now the public works director and not myself. So, 2024 budget revenue summary, um, for general government, um, we're going up 6.86%. Uh, we'll just take the significant ones here. Um, parks is seeing a fairly big increase, um, in expenses, although relatively low when you look at the money. Um, the transfer in, as I indicated, we're making a fair amount of purchases and doing a street project next year, so we'll need more money from our, um, our revenue funds, um, and our, um, investment funds to help pay for some of that money. Um, so our total revenues for the year will be $4,707.284, um, which is a fairly significant increase over last year, uh, 6.5%. So, the 2024 budget expense summary matches, obviously, what we are bringing in for revenue. Some of the significant factor, or significant increases, because we had talked about before, police is seeing a fairly big increase, mostly because of that reallocation um, and changing how we show, um, what's getting paid for essentially. And then capital outlay, as I indicated prior, um, some of the purchases that we're making in the street projects that we're doing. Now, we'll do a budget comparison for years past, um, so this does not include the library. Um, so if you can tell, we're kind of somewhat flat, but going up year to year. And then the tax levy summary, so for 2024, the general fund tax levy is, um, estimated at $1,370,247. That we have general obligation debt service, which is essentially our fire hall payment of $166,925, and the proportion for the library levy is $204,500 for a total levy of $1,741,672, which, as we had indicated before, a 5.2% increase over the 2023 adopted levy. Um, this is just indicating the general fund levy over the past several years. Um, this excludes the library again, um, of an increase of 5.45%. This is a city levy comparison, 2019 to 2023. Um, we don't know the, what the other cities are currently proposing. Um, so we did a five-year stretch of, starting in 2023. As you can see right here, we are almost in the middle. If you kind of throw out the outliers for low and high, our average over the past, or combined average over the past, um, five years is 24.7%. So, that's not every year, that has to get divided by five essentially to get our average. So, roughly about 5% a year. So, the property tax rate, this is calculated by the percentage of the property owner's overall tax payment that is allocated to the city. So, if you look at your tax bill and there'll be multiple items on there, so it'll be city taxes, it'll be school district taxes, and Washington County are the three primary ones. Um, if you divide all those out, the city portion this year will be 27.59%, which is actually a decrease, um, from 2023, even though the city taxes are increasing. So, if you can explain that to me.
We were listening.
Yes.
We can.
So, here's the property tax estimate. This is what the impact will be for residential properties. So, the first line with the $358,800, that is the current median market value in the city of Bayport. That's what your average house would sell for in the city of Bayport. Um, so, the current proposed increase from 2023, your property taxes would go up $57.71. Um, obviously, the higher you go, the, uh, more payout there will be. Um, it ranges anywhere from, I believe, 7% to 9% based on which category you're in.
It's technically the median, not the average.
Sorry, median, yes.
So, at the 50% tile.
Yep.
Every, there also will be homes that will pay less than the 57, 71. 50% of them actually would pay less than that.
Correct.
Okay, to be clear.
So, the 2024 preliminary budget summary, um, just like to thank the city council and staff. Um, we're in a pretty unique position, um, to continue providing a high-level service um, with a, a relatively low tax impa- impact. Um, we also have a very good, um, investment fund that we can use for, um, capital purchases and reconstruction projects. And so, we're, we're sitting in a very good spot from a, from a financial standpoint. Um, this budget ensures maintain a high quality of life for residents and property owners while also demonstrating responsibility with public resources um, and making important investments for the future. That, stand for questions. Oh, I will note, sorry, Madam Mayor, um, there will be three resolutions to pass um, for the tax levy, um, and then the total budget, and then also the capital improvement plan.
No, I think, I think that when you look at the city-level comparison and, and based on, you know, what Bayport has, the size of our town and the amenities, we have, you know, we're kind of right in the middle there with our neighbors and, um, we have, you know, significantly. And we have, you know, significantly more things that we provide from a city standpoint, the library being one, our own police department, things like that. So, our own fire department. I think, year in, year out, we should be proud of how we do from a budget standpoint, at least in my, you know, what is it, six-ish years on council. It's been pretty great, I think.
Anyone else? Good comment, John?
I agree.
Oh, go ahead, Connie.
No, I was.
I think another thing that.
And I know we talked a lot about it.
Consider, is, you know, Matt just gave us the presentation. For people that may be watching, this isn't the first time we've seen this stuff. So we have been talking about it, we've looked at it multiple times, and so we've done our due diligence in terms of looking at the budget.
Yeah, Matt did a great job.
So, yes, excellent job, you and your staff.
Yeah, everything is always very clear and concise, and I appreciate all the info and the way it's been provided. And I can go on and on about how I love the new booklet.
Yes, this may be enough to make Adam blush.
Oh, yeah. Adam did set you up pretty well, I think. He was a pretty detailed guy, so that helps. It is always very confusing levy versus actual tax, you know. I think people will get that. And then the tax rate on top of it all just complicates things, but you have to explain it all. So I think the bottom line is that slide fourteen, where you can see what's actually going to happen to like a median-valued homes taxes.
Correct, yeah, you actually see how much your taxes would increase, yep.
It is kind of interesting to see that, so the median home value increases about sixty dollars, but then you go to a slightly less valued home, and it goes up sixty-eight. So it's always, it's a little strange.
Yeah, they're not always, like I said, the percentage, actually, there's a range, right, between seven and nine percent of what they actually increase. So, yeah, you could actually have a house that's worth less having higher taxes. It has to do with the, it's the, it used to be called home market value, how they calculated that. So you're taxed different on certain amounts of what your house is worth. The first seventy-five thousand is taxed at one rate, and then the next fifty and fifty. And once you get over like four hundred thousand, then your house is just taxed at a certain level. So that has something to do with it.
Yeah, they can't make it any more complicated.
No.
Yeah. All right, so any other comments or any questions? Does anyone want to attempt making some motions? I'm going to start with the first one on the levy.
I'm going to adopt the resolution of the preliminary levy for 2024.
Second.
All right, thanks, Ethan and John. We have to do a roll call vote for each one. Is that how it works, Matt?
Yeah, give me a second.
All right. Do we have to say the actual dollar value of the levy, or is it okay to be that generic?
I think we're okay, Madam Mayor. They're not changing from what's been in the packet.
All right, great. So we have a motion and a second for the levy?
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. I mess it up all the time, let you mess it up.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. All right, how about a motion for that?
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of the preliminary budget for the twenty, for 2024.
Please, sir. Connie and Katie, we'll give it to.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye.
I'll move to adopt a resolution of the proposed capital improvement plan for 2024.
One second.
All right, John and Ethan, thank you.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. All right. So Matt's going to announce something. That's what it says on my agenda.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is just to inform the public that the Truth in Taxation hearing will be heard on December fourth, 2023. You are welcome to come in and provide feedback on the proposed budget and levy and your tax statement.
All right, thanks. We move on to city council liaison reports. Full lineup. John, you want to go first?
Middle St. Cora Waters said, did not meet last month, so I have nothing to report.
Great, Katie, got BCal?
Yeah, BCal Derby Days is this weekend. So Friday is Party in the Park, neon theme, so come in eighties neon theme. Starts at five, but music starts at six, goes till ten. And then Saturday is all day. Nine AM, the medallion hunt starts. Twelve, the duck derby happens at Perro Park. Two o'clock is the pep parade. And then down at Lakefront, it will be the music from four to six, and baseball. And then five to eight-thirty is food and drinks. There'll be a DJ from six to eight-thirty, and fireworks at eight-thirty.
On Saturday.
On Saturday.
On Saturday. Nice. Pretty much the typical Derby Days. In fact, go on, but last year's Party in the Park was really, really fun, and we're expecting another really, really fun night. We're also gonna, I think there's a raffle that Mary Gillette's been putting together, which is new this year. We will be selling ducks for the duck derby at Party in the Park. You can also get them online.
And costume contest. So come dressed in your best of the eighties gear, so you can win.
And there's, I think, too, like a kid and an adult contest, so. Yeah, so great, thanks. Anything else that you want to share?
That's it?
No, that's it.
We're good. Ethan?
Cable Commission did not meet, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, the library board did meet in August. We kind of discussed the budget, and then Joe went over the activities that took place over the summer, and that it was very successful. And then the library will be hosting, I don't even want to call it hosting, but a couple of things at Derby Days. They have an event planned at eleven at Perro Park. And I can't think, it began with.
It's something with a circus or something.
Magicians.
It sounded really fun, whatever it is.
It's an event that she said, you don't have to sit and watch the whole thing, because it kind of just moves along, so you aren't going to miss something if you don't stay the whole time. And then the storytime strolling, not sure if they're going to walk through the.
It's, yeah, it's a story stroll. I think if it's like last year, there's like a storyboard every so often, and then they walk along. And I don't know if she reads it to the kids, or how. But they, last year they walked from Mabel's, because they had that yoga thing over, but.
This sounds like they're going to stroll through.
It's through the Perro Park. So this is all like while we'll be starting to sell ducks at eleven, and so it's before the derby. So people have, and I think there will be other, I think like the scouts in the church, we're both going to set up, maybe both churches that are right there, set up little tables to have other activities. So hopefully there's more to do if you come early for the duck derby.
And then there's the book sale. And then, other than that, just, I mean, she came tonight to the budget, because that was a little bit discussed. And then just said she really enjoyed the summer, and they're looking forward to having the kids back from the school attending the letter. And we'll meet next, actually, next Tuesday, the nineteenth, at six, so.
Wonderful, thanks. I, on the fourteenth, went to the Fire Department Relief Association meeting. It was pretty, there's nothing really going on. They're doing fine with their funding, and they're coming up with ways to do more fundraisers, including being at the Party in the Park. I think they're going to be selling hamburgers and hot dogs. On the seventeenth, I had a chance to meet with the new owners of Olio and see how they're moving things along there, and how it's been working with, working with the city. And they've been very pleased, and they're excited to open sometime in early October, I believe it is now. The twenty-second, I had a chamber ambassadors meeting. Just trying to do my best to, it's called the Greater Stillwater Chamber. So I'm trying to remind everyone that Bayport's also part of that Greater Stillwater area. The twenty-eighth, went to the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Meeting. Started off and walked in the room, and there was probably thirty residents there, which never, has not happened in the other couple of meetings that I've been to. So, and of course, it was the meeting where we had the spotlight on Bayport. So I got to do a presentation about our town, and had many more ears and eyes to participate in that. So that was kind of fun. We did a quick, it was about a five-minute presentation, just to kind of give a background on what we do, because they want everyone in that advisory committee to understand everybody else. So we do little spotlights on airport users and the communities, and so it's kind of a nice idea. So all those people were there, because there are, I think I've mentioned at other meetings, how we've had thousands of complaints from a specific area in Lake Elmo that has noise issues, and also just low-flying planes. And so lots of discussion about that. They all had a chance to, you know, it was like an open forum, so they would have a chance to speak about how they feel. There was one resident who had a lot of data, wasn't just complaining about noise, but literally looked into a lot of data, did a great job. And so we are working on, with the Metropolitan Airport Commission staff, on a noise abatement plan. So we're going to put a draft together and keep things moving to hopefully help those neighbors with that. There is definitely increased traffic with the new runway at the airport. So they moved the runway over slightly and extended it for safety, and it is used more, I think. So might be part of the issue. And then afterwards, we, some of us went on a tour of the airport, which was interesting. So hadn't seen all of it. They have a flight school there. Totally oblivious, did not know. So if you want your kids to learn how to fly, you can send them over there. It's pretty interesting. I think that's also part of the increased traffic during the summer. They do a lot more of the, and they all do the same route when they're teaching. So they're going over the same homes a lot. So we're going to be working with them too, I'm sure. The twenty-ninth, met with a developer interested in the Anderson Farm property. He had just had some questions about how we as a city would feel about some things, and just giving him some background information. Had a chance to meet with Simon this month, too, just kind of check in. And really excited about how excited he is about Bayport, so that was fun. Met with interim Chief Jackson, too, his little check-in. Had some chats with the school board members, school district staff about everything that's going on. Also went to Chambers, the Chambers Women's Business Bridge on the eighth, and got to hand out some Derby Days flyers and talk again about our great city. So that's enough, plus all the other little, meet with Matt and talk to Matt all the time. He's tired of me and residents here and there, but it was a busy month. Let's see, we'll move on to the staff and city administrator reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fire Chief Eisener actually has drill tonight and a Fire Relief Association meeting, so we let him off. Couple of notes on his report. Call volume, total volume for the year is eight-ten compared to seven forty-seven last year. So that's seeing an increase. And a couple anniversaries to point out, Mike Bell, thirty-three years. Mike Galowitz, twenty-four years, and Andy Swenson, fifteen years. With that, interim police chief Jackson.
Madam Mayor, council, just to go through a couple of things that we had to reschedule our tactical shoot this last month due to the heat. So we just pushed back a week, and that went off without any issues. Have quite a few upcoming events here. September ninth, Officer Cornell and Maze attended the Stillwater ECFE Annual Big Truck Event. We also were able to make some contacts for some potential things for National Night Out next year, so, or Night to United next year, so hopefully that will come through for us. But the event was well-received by all. We have our second tactical shoot coming up here this Thursday for all of our staff. We also have the Bayport Bash at the First State Bank coming up, which Officer Cornell and Maze and myself will be attending. And then also the Derby Days events, we'll have some staff at that, as well as myself, on Saturday, looking forward to the fireworks. And then also the Halloween event coming up is going to be at the Old Fire Hall, where we used to have it, and I'm working with the mayor, and we're trying to bring back our former glory, that was our Halloween event. So hopefully we'll get a much larger turnout, and we have a couple of things, we're working on that, to hopefully draw a little bit better crowd. And also still going to be handing out our glow necklaces, just to increase visibility for the kids, since we do have quite the crowd on our side streets here. And total incidences and calls, self-initiated as of August, is four thousand nine hundred and seventeen. Also attached to your reports was the K-9 handler report from Officer Cornell, just outlining some of our timelines, since Maze has joined us, as well as some of the upcoming events that he is attending. That I also covered with our upcoming events, and I will stand for questions.
Questions? Thank you, and tell Officer Cornell, thanks for the update. I appreciated that extra little.
Oh, sure.
Info in there.
Yep, and we do plan on continuing that as we move forward, just to keep you guys updated and let you know what Maze is up to, and the different events that we're attending, as well as our call load and what he's getting himself into, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Public Works Director, Worth.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this month, my report indicates that it was another month dominated by tree work. We had D.J. Haynes come through, and they were able to remove twenty-five ash trees that we picked out that were in desperate need of being removed. We do plan on having Willow River Company out to replace those trees. They will be in at the end of September, early October. We're at the point now where we will be identifying the locations and species of trees. Have had a couple of residents reach out to ask if they could be involved in the choice of those trees. I would be happy to accommodate that, barring it's some nonsensical request. But we do have a list of trees that we have that we can choose from, and as long as they're appropriate as far as power lines and things like that. We did also apply for a relief community forestry grant, which I attended a meeting with the Minnesota DNR that they held in St. Paul, just as an informational session. We did put an application together for that and submitted it. The city has been successful with that grant in the past. This time around, we are requesting approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars over the course of three years to help in the relief of removal of ash trees and the replacement of those trees. The grant applications are looked more favorably if we replace more trees than we remove. So we did indicate that we would be doing that. We should hopefully hear something by October, November. Their timeline is pretty aggressive, so we should hopefully, I feel we had a strong application. It was looked at by other members of the staff who have experience in this sort of activity. So I hope that we can secure some monies for that moving forward. That would certainly help the budget. Also, enhanced street sweeping, we are involved in a program that the watershed, Washington Conservation District, is going to be reimbursing the city for hours spent behind the wheel of the street sweeper cleaning up some leaves around the city, something that we do pretty much anyways. So they will be offering up about twenty-five hundred dollars, a little less than twenty-five hundred dollars a year, to help to reimburse us for those processes to keep phosphorus levels out of the river in high canopy areas around the city. Lead service line will continue, lead service line inventory will continue. That is anticipated to be completed, well, needs to be completed by October of twenty-four. We are on pace to do that. I did want to make note of, if any residents are listening or watching this video, and they have not had their lead service line inventory, they're. I did want to make note of if any residents are listening or watching this video and they have not had their lead service line inventory, their, their home, uh, inspected. Uh, it takes about five minutes for one, an individual of our staff to go into the home and just to determine what classification of material is used from the street service line into their home. That would be very beneficial to us so that we can, if they can actually be proactive reaching out to us, that would be appreciated. Replacement swing set for Lakeside Park is on order and it will be hopefully delivered by late October. City staff, Public Works will be installing that swing set, um, that was destroyed in the windstorm from July. Along the lines of city staff, we did lose, uh, an employee who's been here for approximately five years, Ross Lindgren. Uh, he has moved on to better opportunities, so, uh, we are sorry to see him leave. We will be looking for new applications here and going through that process. Hopefully, uh, we'll be fully staffed by mid-November. Specifically before the snow flies, hopefully, because we could certainly use the help. With that, I stand for questions.
Lot of detail, that was great. And thank you for all of the grants you've been going after. We kind of breezed over the one in the consent agenda that we're going to be looking at, the Conservation Partners Legacy one for Barker's Alps. And that's very exciting if we can get that. I don't know if you want to tell a little bit of the background right now or not, but hopefully the next meeting we'll get a little more information. But I think it's intriguing that it was started by an actual resident.
Certainly. Yes, and, uh, that resident approached, um, me earlier this summer and, uh, mentioned that he would like to see, um, potential restoration to native habitats in Barker's Alps along the hillside since it is overwhelmingly buckthorn at this point and it's beginning to choke out some of the natural, uh, some of the oaks that we have in that park. It's a beautiful park, beautiful hillside, a nice trail going right through it and you can see about five feet into the woods, uh, if you were walking along those trails. So, um, there are some stunning examples around the area, specifically up on Arcola Trail, north of Stillwater. If you guys are ever up in that area, um, there is a great example of a project that they undertook that, uh, is showing very good results at this point. Um, Belwin is obviously a great example for some oak savanna restoration that they've completed, um, and had a lot of success with. And the CPL, uh, is, uh, a, an organization that, uh, will, uh, grant monies, um, towards municipalities or nonprofit organizations to assist in those types of projects. They ask for in-kind match or cash matches in the sum of ten percent of the overall monies that they grant. In-kind would probably be our best bet. I think it wouldn't be an issue coming up with volunteer hours or in this community. I can't imagine especially if they were to be able to see, uh, the benefit that there would be to the community, so. Again, we're working with the Washington Conservation District on, uh, completing that application. Uh, they are due next Tuesday. We have a pretty strong, uh, chance, I'm hoping, of getting some of those monies awarded. And it would be fun to see, uh, the transformation that that hillside in Barker's Alps could undertake, um, with the help of that money. So more to come on that and I certainly hope to be bringing good news in the next couple of months on that as well.
Thanks. And just to be clear, the hillside is, when you say that, you're talking about the, that pathway sort of between lower and upper Barkers, not just the hill that's in the middle of lower.
Not, not, not the sliding hill.
Yes, exactly. Okay, just want to be clear, because it was like, what are you talking about?
There is buckthorn there, though.
There is probably some there.
It's approximately twenty-five acres, so, uh, it's a large chunk, certainly.
Be great to help that area out, so, thank you.
Assistant City Minister Taylor.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, the latest edition of the city's print newsletter, Bayport News, was distributed mid-August. Uh, the next edition is scheduled for distribution in December. Um, absentee and early voting for the Stillwater Area Public School District Special Election begins on September twenty-second, either by mail or in-person at the Washington County Governments that are in Stillwater. Uh, for new voter registration applications or absentee voting information, residents should visit the Washington County website. Uh, polls will be open for in-person voting from seven AM to eight PM on November seventh and all residents vote at the new Bayport Fire Station. Uh, just a few upcoming community events to highlight. Uh, Washington County will be hosting a free hazardous material drop-off at Lily Lake Ice Arena in Stillwater on September twenty-third at eight AM. And that's free and open to all county residents. And they're also hosting a second event for free confidential document shredding at the Environmental Center in Woodbury on September twenty-seventh at eight AM. More information is on their website. The rest of the information or things that we've been working on were already covered earlier in the agenda. And that's the reason Matt and I have kind of been tag teaming on our staff reports lately and memos because we're working on the same stuff together, so. I stand for questions.
With the hazardous waste, do they have a list of acceptable things?
I believe they do on the Washington County website. If you search special collection events, they list what is and isn't acceptable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, just a couple of things to add to that, Madam Mayor. The, um, city staff is working with, uh, interim chief Jackson on the cannabinoid, uh, registration license. Um, we've reached out to all of the, um, property owners, um, and received some requests, um, for, uh, the license. And we'll be setting up a meeting here hopefully in the next week or two, um, to move that process along. It should be a fairly straightforward process and fairly quick, um, once we can ever get everybody in the same room. Preliminary budget was given tonight. Passed that, um, a five-point-four percent levy increase, which obviously we can decrease, but we can increase, um, here at the end of the year. And then finally, the twenty-twenty-two city audit, which seems to have gone on forever. Hopefully they will be at the October second, uh, city council meeting to provide a, um, essentially, uh, an audit overview. They did finish up fieldwork, um, and part of the reason is for, well, there've been multiple reasons for the delay. One is staffing issues that they're having and two, um, they've been under the weather, um, a fair amount this summer. Oh, and one other item, the Centennial Pavilion, um, the hope is, well, the plan is that we will have it up and ready for a December, uh, Lighting of the Green activity.
Yeah, and work has already started with, we had to take a tree down that was dying, so that's where the pavilion's going to go. And how's it going with, are we doing any kind of excavation there yet?
Excavation site prep will start tomorrow.
Okay, great. And we should get the pavilion actually delivered soon, which has been part of the.
Yes, the, uh, the Saint Crater Recreation just texted me like an hour ago indicating where we want it delivered, so.
So it's coming.
Coming.
Finally. And I've been in, um, discussions with the Legion about where we're at and next steps with them and putting together our historical marker information to put those in hopefully at the same time as everything else. And then also I just want, maybe we just move right into city council items and announcements and I want to say a big thank you to Siegfried Construction for the donation of the concrete. And just the slab, the concrete slab for the pavilion. So they donated that at the value of about ten thousand dollars. So huge thank you to them. Nice local company that's trying to, to help us out there, so. Yeah, and we accepted the, the bid earlier today, so. This meeting, anyone else have any council items or announcements? No, we would like to announce that Connie is hungry, so we would like to go.
Skip her lunch.
She, she challenged me to do the shortest meeting ever. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Ethan.
I'll second it.
All right, Connie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.